Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 10th, 2018 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. During this meeting, should an emergency arise, please calmly proceed to the nearest exit down the hallway to the right and down the staircase. If you're unable to use that exit, please make a left and then a right and proceed down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you should need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. I would also ask that you please silence any electronic devices that make noise, and if it's necessary to take a phone call or make a phone call, we ask that you please exit the council chambers to do so. At this time, I'll call on Pastor David Hudson of Livingstone's Church for our invocation. Pastor Hudson.
May we pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this privileged Father to gather here this evening to administer the needs for this wonderful city. Father, your word tells us that you raise up our leaders, Lord, so we pray for each leader here this day, and that they will hear clearly your voice, Lord, and heed to your calling. And, Lord, I thank you for this city, Father, and how great it is because of the leaders that have risen up. So we pray your wisdom upon them. Also, Father, we just come against this Florence, this storm that's out in the seas. And, Father, you say you give us power and authority to speak against the storms. And, Father, in the name of Jesus, we tell that thing to turn and not to impact this area, not to create any problems. So, Father, we are grateful people, Lord, and we just thank you for your blessing and your wisdom upon this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have an important event taking place. We have the swearing-in of our new Waterworks Director, Corey Cameron. She has her own fan club, which is good. At this point, I'll ask Mark Bowen to please swear Corey in. Corey, please come forward.
Right up here is fine. If you want to face your family and friends, that's fine. If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," and state your name.
Aye, Corey Cameron.
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
No, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Waterworks Director
Execute the office of Waterworks Director.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Corey, Corey.
You got it.
I need to go.
All right. Thank you. Group picture?
Record, please.
Okay.
But we're standing.
Congratulations. Thanks.
You got this all.
All right, here we go, everyone, on three. One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
Congratulations. Come on. Trying to get the chair.
It squeaked.
Right here. Go see it.
There we go.
You all right? Hold on.
Look over here. One, two, three.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Might help.
Fuck the mayor.
Maybe it's not the chair.
I have to publicly say that there's not a better choice for this position, and we wish you the best. Anything you need, see Julia. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Some move.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Seconded.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Rudisil. Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the August 6th work session minutes, August 13th regular meeting minutes, August 20th work session minutes, August 27th regular meeting minutes, and August 27th closed session minutes, and Resolution Number 2866 approving the appointment of Alexander Posiga to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending September 2021. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Is Alexander here? No? We wish him the best and thank him for volunteering. I'll entertain a motion to award the bids.
Some move.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda and Mr. Irtin.
Some move from the left and a second from the right.
Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, everyone.
We're still a little punchy from the weekend, so you have to forgive us.
Only one item this evening. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for citywide street resurfacing. The work to be performed includes roadway asphalt milling, paving, patching, striping, and subgrade repair, and will require multiple mobilizations in various areas throughout the city. This award will constitute a requirements contract. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amounts of each item bid to cover its requirements, the quantity of work ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Thereby, the city reserves the right to increase or decrease the quantities acknowledged in the solicitation document, and said modifications do not constitute a change order. Additionally, the contract included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The pricing of future renewals may be adjusted due to fluctuations in asphalt pricing when the index price increases or decreases more than 5% of the prevailing base index price per the Maryland Asphalt Association. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the State of Maryland's website, eMarylandMarketplace. A total of three vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of August 17th, 2018, at 2:30 p.m. So, three bids, one from Chesapeake Paving and Sealing, one from Allen Myers Incorporated, and one from Georgian Lynch Incorporated. All vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB-A-19-103 to all vendors with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. An award to multiple contractors affords the city the opportunity to assign work to the most cost-effective and available contractor. Purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed. The FY19 budget for street maintenance is $650,000.
Any questions?
Just a clarification, but I don't see anybody from public work, so I will just send it by email to Julia.
Okay. Very good.
Were you going to ask the difference question?
I'm not sure.
That's what I was going to ask.
I was going to ask if it's two one-year terms and we're doing it for all three, why isn't just a regular term if you have two other people you can go to? I mean, we've been there before where all three of these, somebody's on the eastern shore of Virginia, somebody's in Delaware, somebody's in, and, well, we can't get them back right away. And if we've got three of them, I didn't know whether or not the extended two one-year terms would have been necessary. But really, if Mrs. --
Pollak.
Yeah. If Mrs. Pollak says, "This is what I want to do," I'm just going to say, "Well, then, yay."
And I would concur, that is what she wants to do.
That's what she'd say. All right. Well, then, that being said, then, having been in the position many times where the street needs to be paved, it's on my list, the council's funded it, and we can't find anybody to do it. It is our hope, it is my hope that
One of these three.
Now that one of these three should be able to do it. If you could pass that on to her, I would appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irtin.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask, you know, there's a, between Chesapeake Paving and Georgian Lynch, there's a $500,000 difference with the other company in the middle. Any idea why there's such a difference, or is that another Ms. Pollak question?
Well, let me see if I actually brought the bid table. I didn't. So, would it be all right if I update you via email?
Sure.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
That's fine. Send it to all of us, because that was my question as well.
Sure.
It does, this is one of the bid documents where everybody is somebody we know and semi-local for most of all of them, and that's not something that happens all the time.
Right.
So, if you'll pass along to her, bravo for keeping it close to home.
I will.
You, too.
You, too.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two public hearings tonight, and I think what we'll do for efficiency, anyone who wishes to speak in either of those two, please stand and be sworn in by Mrs. Nichols.
Mr. Miller, may I solemnly swear or affirm that testimony you are about to give is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes, thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Ordinance Number 2501. I'll call for a motion.
Some move.
Mr. Boda.
Seconded.
Mr. Rudisil. Mr. Tillman, would you please read the ordinance?
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to Chapter 17.228 of Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Section 4.04 of Article 66B, the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending Section 17.04.120 and 17.76.020A to define multi-use facility and to allow multi-use facilities as a permitted use, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title 17 of the zoning, the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendments that will keep Title 17 current, whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Code pursuant to the authority granted by Article 66B of the Maryland Annotated Code in accordance with specific provisions, Chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17 zoning, and whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practice as an input from the city council and members of the public, and whereas Deverco Glen LLC submitted an application to amend the text of the definition of multi-use facility and to allow multi-use facilities as a permitted use in the light industrial zoning district, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Planning Commission in accordance with Chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on May 17th, 2018, and whereas the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Section 17.04.120 and 17.76.020A. Now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, the Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is amended as follows. Amend Section 17.76.02A permitted uses by adding the following item, number 32, multi-use facility, and then amend Section 17.04.120 definitions by adding the following item, multi-use facility dash two or more similar or different uses on a lot or parcel that are conducted in physically separate areas and permitted inherently or otherwise in the district in which located, provided that the lot or parcel and improvements thereon satisfy the total parking lot area and other requirements of the uses. The facility shall not be deemed to be a shopping center if the total floor area of the uses in which the principal activity is onsite retail sales does not exceed one-third of the gross floor area of the entire facility.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, please go to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? At this point, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2501 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Oh, my God.
I'll entertain a motion to, and a second to approve Ordinance Number 2502 for the second reading.
Some move.
Seconded.
Harmony. Let's give Ms. Jackson the first one, and the second was Mr. Rudisil, I believe. Okay. Mr. Tillman, will you please read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to Chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Section 4.102 of the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending Section 17.20.020 to add hotel or motel as a permitted use in the college and university district, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title 17 of the code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment that will keep Title 17 current, whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Land Use, Section 4-101, in accordance with the specific provisions of Chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17 zoning, and whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practice as an input from the city council and members of the public, and whereas the Purius Realty Group submitted an application to amend the text of Chapter 17.20, college and university districts, specifically the addition of a new item N to Section 17.20.020, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 17.228, and whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to that section, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, the Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is amended as follows. Amend Section 17.20.020 permitted uses by adding item N as follows, and item N is identified as a hotel or motel.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing for 2502. Anybody that wishes to comment, please go to the podium. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions in the group? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2502 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2503 for the second reading.
Some move.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil. I got you that time.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT, whereas the Wycomico County Health Department, in conjunction with the City of Salisbury, applied for funds through the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission Grant Program, and whereas the Community Health Resources, Community Health Resources Grant Program has awarded the Wycomico County Health Department funds in the amount of $90,000, and whereas the Wycomico County Health Department is sub-granting $50,000 to the City of Salisbury, and whereas the sub-granting fund shall be used to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-grant agreement with Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made on the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows. One, increase SWIFT grant revenue by $50,000. Two, increase SWIFT grant expense by $50,000.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2503 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2503 for the second reading.
Some move.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil.
I got you that time. Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT, whereas the Wycomico County Health Department, in conjunction with the City of Salisbury, applied for funds through the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission Grant Program, and whereas the Community Health Resources, Community Health Resources Grant Program has awarded the Wycomico County Health Department funds in the amount of $90,000, and whereas the Wycomico County Health Department is sub-granting $50,000 to the City of Salisbury, and whereas the sub-granting fund shall be used to operate the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team, SWIFT, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-grant agreement with Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made on the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows. One, increase SWIFT grant revenue by $50,000. Two, increase SWIFT grant expense by $50,000.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2503 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2504 for the second reading.
Some move.
Seconded.
You can't do both. Ms. Jackson and Mr. Rudisil. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.04.040, subsections C and G, ethics, conflicts of interest, Chapter 2.04.050, subsection G5I, financial disclosure, local elected officials and candidates to be local elected officials, in Chapter 2.04.060, subsection D, financial disclosure, employees and appointed officials, to comply with subtitle eight of the Maryland Public Ethics Law requirements for ethics legislation relating to conflicts of interest, financial disclosure, and lobbying, whereas the Maryland law requires certain provisions in the Ethics Code of the Maryland municipalities and counties, and whereas the State of Maryland made changes to the public ethics law, which took effect on October 1st, 2017, and whereas some of these changes require the city to amend Chapter 2.04, the Salisbury Municipal Code, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, Chapter 2.04, Section .040C and G, Section .050G5I, and Section .060D be amended as follows. All right, the first one there is 2.04.040, and that's just simply taking out the word "the" in line 31. The following page is just putting in there what is not being changed, but what's being added to that is under the subsection three is, it reads, "A case, contract, or other specific matter for which one calendar, for one calendar year after terminating their resignation if they previously assisted or represented another party as a lobbyist in the matter." This provision does not apply to uncompensated or minimally compensated board or commission members. And so, you have to read that three in conjunction with the first sentence there. It says, "Subsection C, participation prohibitions, except as permitted by commission regulation or opinion. An official or employee may not participate in," and then the item three is the one that I just read. So, basically, someone who has worked in the capacity as a lobbyist in a matter may not participate as a member. And then the next change is a new addition of subsection four, which reads that a person who is disqualified from participating under one or two or three, or one, two, or three of this subsection shall disclose the nature and circumstances of the conflict and may participate or act if the disqualification leaves the body with less than a quorum capable of acting. The disqualified official or employee is required to, by law, to act, or the disqualified official or employee is the only person authorized to act. And again, that section was already there, we're only adding the new, new matter that they are not permitted to participate in, but that section makes it clear that they're not completely forbidden in the event of a legal necessity they may participate if they disclose it. The new numbered sub-paragraph five is basically the same one that was already there, again with the addition of the new subsection three pertaining to lobbyists. Basically, these additions in this law are pertaining to lobbying and lobbyists, additional disclosures that have to be made. Under subsection G, use of prestige of the office. Subsection one, an official or employee may not intentionally use the prestige of the office or public position for the private gain of that official or employee, or the private gain of another. And then the addition reads, "The prohibitions of this section include, but are not limited to, the use of influence in the award of a city contract to a specific person or entity. Subsection double I, initiating a solicitation for a person to retain the compensated services of a particular lobbyist or firm, and subsection triple I, using public resources or title to solicit a political contribution regulated in accordance with the election law, Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland." The next section, 2.04.050, financial disclosure, local elected officials and candidates to be elected officials, the, again, what's being changed down there is under subsection G5I, the word salaried is being substituted for compensated in the event that the compensation was not W2 income, but some other form. And then we're adding an additional sentence at the end of that paragraph that reads, "All statements filed under this section shall disclose whether the individual or the individual's spouse is a lobbyist required to register, and if so, they shall identify the entities that engage the lobbyist." Under subsection two, I'm sorry, subsection double I, B, again, the word salaried is being struck, and the word compensated is being put in its place. Under subsection, or section 2.04.060, again, under subsection D, we are adding language having to do with officials and employees shall disclose in all statements filed here under whether they or their spouse is a lobbyist required to register, and if so, they shall identify the entities that engage the lobbyist. And that's it. We left out the proposed changes that will come in a later resolution to keep it simple.
Just clarification, because I think that the first time you said salaried and compensated, I think you had it backwards.
Okay.
The second time you said it correctly, where you're striking salaried and adding compensated.
Yes, that's happening in both cases.
Okay. Just for clarification, so we'll make sure. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2504 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nichols, do we have any public comment, requests for public comments?
No.
Good to the order. I have one thing. I would just want to say that I've never been so proud of our city and the surrounding communities for support that we receive from the National Folk Festival. It was rainy, but everybody had a smile on their face, everybody enjoyed themselves, the hours that those people put in, and to drive through today, through the city and see the condition of the city, less than 24 hours, is kind of remarkable. So, my thanks to everybody. Anyone else?
All I can say, all I can say is I really enjoyed myself.
Good. With that, we are adjourned.